We now call this workshop and regular combined meeting to order for the Jacksonville City Council. I want to welcome everyone who's come out tonight to the meeting and also those who'd be watching the meeting on G10 television. To begin our meeting this evening, we're going to start by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Cindy Edwards, followed by the invocation by our city attorney, John Carter. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, as always, we pause before the beginning of this meeting to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this day and all the blessings that you bestow upon each of us and upon our city. As we approach the end of a year and this holiday season, we are so thankful for the blessings that you've bestowed upon us and that you've given us the opportunity to live under your grace, under your peace. We pray for our mayor and council, who have always worked together and striving to work together to serve our citizens and their issues and their needs. We pray that your guidance and direction would continue to be with them. And we always pray for our military, for those serving here and those serving around the world, for their safety, for their anxious families. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
All right, council, we have the agenda that's been provided to you tonight. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, adding a number six to the non-consent agenda for the bid award for the fire station number four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion here? None, all in favor, signify with a say aye. All opposed. Let's bring us to our first section of public comment for this evening. And do you have a... No one signed up? Okay. We have no one signed up for public comment. In the event that some... Somebody came in after the sheet was taken up, was there anyone present wishes to speak at public comment? All right, seeing no one, we're going to move on to next. We have a presentation here tonight, and I'm going to ask Reverend Chris Phillips and his congregation representatives with him tonight to come forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you.
I will put this right side up here while our folks take their places. And this is our 16th year of being able to make this presentation to the city of Jacksonville, and these funds are used every summer for the children's programs that are run by the city. And we do this for a variety of motives. We're motivated by the love of God. We're motivated by love for our community. We're motivated by gratitude, and we're motivated by a desire to show that in some tangible way and bring glory to God at the same time. And so, for the 16th year now in a row, thank God, we are here on behalf of River of Life Church. The church is actually much bigger than what you see behind us here. We didn't come up with this all on our own here. But together, every year, we've been able to do this, and it's an honor and privilege. And we love our community, and we're very thankful for you all and the work that you do as well.
We're very thankful for this generosity that you've showed over the last 16 years. It's been that long, huh? I know that a lot of children benefit this, from this through our many programs that we have, through recreation. And I want to thank each and every one of you here. And I know you've got a house full over there at River of Life Church. Please pass on our appreciation for that. And I'd like to read a little something here, because I got... If you want me to take that out of your hands, I will.
Yeah, you can. And there's a real one that I gave to both.
I was actually going to tell her she might need to go in the bank with this, because I don't think it'll fit through the drive.
Might make it difficult.
And like Pastor Chris says, since 2006, the River of Life Church has generously made an annual donation to the city. And this donation has assisted tremendously this year by providing an eight-week summer enrichment program for 48 children and covering fees for low-income participants in the summer day camp program. The funds also provided book bags, school supplies, hygiene products, food, arts and crafts kits, board games, and various outdoor supplies such as balls, jump ropes, and many more. The donation from River of Life makes a huge difference in the lives of these children who otherwise might not have had the opportunity to participate in these programs. The city cannot emphasize enough the value of providing a safe, enriching, and enjoyable location for children of this community. Investing in our youth reduces crime and improves academic achievement for students, and the donation from the church helps to accomplish that. The city extends our sincere thanks to the members of the River of Life Church for all they have done through these annual donations for the children of this community. Again, Chris, thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I'd like to just take this opportunity to give Mr. Jackson here a certificate for five years of service, distinguished dedicated service on the Jacksonville City Council. He's been a pleasure to have on board with us. We appreciate all your ideas and your input and just your regular caring about this community that you display so often. And I'd give you your certificate of recognition and, and a pen that you can actually put on there on your thing. I'm not going to stick you. But that's a pretty, that's a pretty pen right there. Thank you, Brian.
It's truly been my pleasure.
Thank you.
To represent my home.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Counsel, again, I'd like to say to the River of Life folks here tonight, thank you very much. Again, like I said, the kids, I mean, it's been such a benefit to these children to be able to, you know, have access to these different things that the money that you presented to us can actually go above and beyond our capability of paying for them. Thank you. We have adoption of minutes and consent items. We have minutes from a November 22, 2022 regular meeting, and we have four consent items. Entertain a motion to approve.
Move for adoption of the minutes and consent items?
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here, none, all in favor, signify with a say aye. Aye. All opposed. Okay. Next thing on our agenda is the non-consent items, item number five, and this is the Trail System Expansion Feasibility Study. It's a request to apply for a grant, and Deanna Treble will be presenting this item. Deanna?
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. This evening, we're, would like to talk about a new NC DOT grant. NC DOT was allocated $2 million to create a paved trails feasibility study program. This program allows the development of a feasibility study. Eligible projects include paved trails, shared use paths, side paths, greenways, and sidewalks with the goal to improve multimodal projects accessibility to acquire state and federal funding. So you might be asking, what is a feasibility study? Well, the feasibility study evaluates your concept and walks it through design, permitting, and construction. It evaluates the strengths, the opportunities, the weaknesses, the constraints, and also identifies a number of alternatives of what that paved path, multi-use path might look like, as well as evaluating or calculating cost estimates. So the development of our pedestrian and bicycle network plan began in 2008 with a council-adopted trail plan, and that's been complemented with the 2045 MPO transportation plan. So the map that you see before us takes those two plans and overlays all the pedestrian accommodations, again sidewalks, multi-use paths, greenways, and the dark gray are existing and green is proposed. So you can see with the plan is the intent to connect centers of employment, shopping centers, grocery stores, goods and services to, other than using your normal road system. The intent for this project is the consideration of looking at the 2008 plan a little bit more closely and focusing on 12 and a half miles of a multi-use path on the major corridors within the city of Jacksonville. So we would be looking at Jacksonville Parkway, Marine Boulevard, Country Club, Western, and Hargit. So the intent is to provide greater accessibility to those who might not otherwise have access to transportation. One of the criteria, grant criteria for this project is a new thing, not really new, but it's new for DOT, and has greater emphasis, is on environmental justice areas. So environmental justice focuses on federally protected demographics of low-income racial and ethnic minorities. And so, one of the questions that we have to ask with this project is, to what extent is our project going to benefit or improve the areas of those who have a transportation disadvantage? So looking at the map, what, what DOT did was they took census block information, they compared that relative to the entire state, and so the colors that you see here, the darker the color, the higher the score, which means it's at a greater disadvantage to other communities. So as you can see here with the proposed study area, that we would be providing or improving areas of opportunity for connectivity and mobility. Likewise, they also focused on what they call the transportation disadvantage index. This one focuses on six main areas, and that is race, income, personal vehicle access, people with mobility impairments, elderly and youth. The same applies of how they've calculated the scores, and as you can see, we would still be serving the greatest need with, with the proposed impact for this proposed multi-use plan. So the NC DOT grant application would provide funding to complete this feasibility study. We would be showing how we would be mitigating the transportation disadvantages. And while the grant itself doesn't require any local match, staff is recommending a 10% match to help with our competitiveness. And at a completed feasibility study, we can now take this study and compete either at the state level through NC DOT's State Transportation Improvement Plan. We can also seek some federal grants for both design and construction. So this evening, staff is requesting council consideration of offering that 10% local match to allow staff to submit the grant application and to approve a resolution of support. At this moment, we're not asking for any commitment of that 10%, if we are lucky enough to get the grant, then we would come back to city council, one, to accept the grant and to appropriate that 10% match. And at this time, I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Counsel, questions? Thank you, Deanna. Counsel, you're asked to consider the resolution of support, authorizing staff to submit the grant application that includes a 10% local match.
Would so move that, that recommendation.
Second. Any discussion? Here, none, all in favor, signify with a say aye. Aye. All opposed.
I would like to comment to staff for looking ahead in terms of finding ways to try to improve the city of Jacksonville in recreation and transportation services. That's commendable, and thank you for the staff work.
It is. You're starting to see a lot more people on the roads now, so that's definitely a great opportunity. Thank you.
So we'll move on now to number six, which is the fire station bid, bid award. This is the add-on.
Mayor, council, thank you for allowing me this last-minute agenda item. As you know, this project, if we didn't stand before you tonight, would push it back another month. Do I need to wait a second?
No, just, just a second. Yeah, you'll be fine.
Carry on.
Carry on.
Yes, sir. We'd push this project back another month, and as we all know, when it comes to this project, time is of the essence. A little brief timeline on this project. We came to you about this time last year with the potential sale of Station Four, the selling of Station Four to the county. The offer was accepted and closed of June 30 of this year. Part of that condition of sale was we'd have to be out of the building by October of 2023. We hired Davis Kane as our architect back in February, and we've been working with them since then. We came to y'all with, excuse me, the council in September with some estimated costs with a 95% completion to forecast some of the anticipated higher costs for this station. The current goals that we wanted to meet with this station was, first and foremost, is the improvement of turnout and response times. The second was to improve the health and safety concerns for our personnel. As always, to meet the current and future needs of fire and emergency services, meet accreditation recommendations about the current Station Four, and also too, with construction, cost, and time, is to minimize the use of a temporary station, which would add to the cost. The design, we used some city-owned land. It was on Marketplace Drive that would take advantage of the future parkway that's coming through. We used our Station Two as a model, which we've been very satisfied with, but also to meet those current and future needs of the department. One of the things that we added was we added a bunk room and bathroom to this facility, because as you know, hurricanes, severe weather of events, we typically upstairs these stations where extra personnel will be in these stations in those significant events. We also lengthened the apparatus bays so it could fit any apparatus within our department, which current Station Two does not. It gives us flexibility. It gives us storage options when it comes to our apparatus. And as you know, things change within the city, so things get moved around. We also added a decon room to our apparatus bay. These are the men and women that responded during the pandemic. We've all heard about the type of cancers that are affecting firefighters nowadays. One of our primary concerns is when they come back from a fire, is to get them into the bay, get them cleaned off before they go into the station, dragging those contaminants inside the station. Also, just day-to-day stuff, we deal with bed bug calls all the time. These men and women are having to strip down in the bays and rinse off in the bays before they come into station to prevent bed bugs from getting in our fire stations. Also, we added hazmat and turnout gear storage. Those are typically being stored at Station Four, where they're exposed to the elements, the weather coming in and out of that station. This... If I did that, I don't know how to change it. But I'll just go to my slides right here. It is our hazmat station. They respond out of there. That's where they store the extra hazmat materials that go out to the other stations, and it's also where we turn our, excuse me, store our spare turnout gear. Go back. Hey, Lisa, or excuse me, media, can y'all go to the one that shows the layout with the There we go, perfect. This is the layout along Marketplace Drive that we showed you earlier in the year. For the time being, we would respond out on the Marketplace Drive, and then with the future, we'd have an access on to the parkway, which would help us with our response to Carolina Forest, Ramsey Road. As you know, there's significant development that's already been there, and then stuff for the future. There's the rendering of Station, the new Station Four. You see it has the city's tower element, which includes the lobby. Marketplace Drive runs parallel with the apparatus bays, and the front of the station looks out to the new parkway. Our funding sources for this project, 4.5 million comes from the general fund. We received another million from the sale of Station Four. Senator Lozaro was able to get us 1.25 million in a state grant for a total of 6.75 million Part of the bid package, on November 29, we received three bids. Unfortunately, our lowest bid came in with substantial errors. Montith construction was the next lowest at 7.36 million dollars. All info that they provided was responsive and correct, and all references from this construction company came back extremely positive. Davis Kane Architects, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, have done several projects with Montith Construction and have been very satisfied with this company. The bid also included 10 alternates. We eliminated six of those alternates to help with costs, but two and nine are desired but did not add any cost. An alternate seven and 10 provide an opportunity to reduce the base bid but not recommend. That's for us keeping the bi-fold doors in the front of the station with aids in response times. Those doors open in four seconds, where our other doors open in 23 to 24 seconds. It also includes a safety factor where we can see those bi-fold doors open up immediately. We know they're completely open. Those overhead doors with the way those trucks sit, the way Quint Four sits, they have to look up through the windshield to make sure that the door is open. There's a safety and, more importantly, a time concern. The additional funding required, the 1.3 estimated Onslow County from the fire property tax, which we will get in June of 2023. There's a $171,995 general fund balance, $104,000 capital reserve fund. Is this where I kick it to you, or do I keep going?
I think you're doing great.
Okay, I'll carry on. The expenditures, so far, we spent $60,000 in planning and preliminary design, $350,000 in engineering and design, 7.4 for construction, $400,000 contingency, and another $100,000 in construction administration. That brings the total to 8.3 million dollars. Our recommendation tonight is you award the base bid with alternates two and nine to Montith Construction in the amount of 7.36 million dollars and approve the budget and CIP amendments. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Questions, Chief Tomlin.
I noticed activity there for the last couple of months. You've done soil borings, maybe they're okay and so on?
Sir?
Soil borings?
Sir, they have. They've done the geotechnical survey.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Well, at one point, we talked about, I think you talked with the county if they'll give us a little bit more time there, because I don't know if getting there by October is really going to be doable. Have you talked to them if they're going to push that backward, that pretty firm on move out?
Yes, sir, I have mentioned it to them. They're doing some research. They, he's reached up to management. You know, part of the contract was that we'd be out by October. That holds up $250,000. But we have explored those options. The questions have been asked, and we're just waiting to hear back from them. Got you. Thank you.
Mayor, we're having that conversation with the county manager as well. So between Mr. Massey and I, we've started that dialogue. We've talked to him about our plan. We've talked to, between Chief Tomlin and Chief Yonero, and then with the county manager. I think we've got a pretty good plan in place. Our challenge now is if council moves forward and gives us a hard start on the project, then we can take back a timeline to them and then give them something to really review. If we weren't, if we didn't move forward tonight with council, then we would come back and go with a different plan. So we told them we'd follow up tomorrow, one way or the other. We have a meeting tomorrow morning with the county.
What are you going to do in the interim?
We've explored options. We've gotten quotes for temporary stations. We've identified a piece of property. There's options that we can split our apparatus up among the stations, or part of the talk with the county was too, is maybe providing a service company out of that station for the time being, or keep it as a regular station.
Okay. All else? All right, so there, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
They're asking us to award the construction contract to the Montith Construction, and if awarded, the budget and CIP amendments also need to be approved. So, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the recommended award and along with the budget and CIP amendments.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right, so that brings us to, I'm going to do the reports right now, and move from there. So I'll start with Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, I would just like to, I'm just thankful for being able to serve the city of Jacksonville Award One. Like I said, this is home. This is my mom's home. This is my grandma, great-grandma's home. So it's just a blessing to be able to come back to Jacksonville and be in this position. I wish everybody a blessed holiday, and I wish lots of love for our community as we keep on building to be in, you know, one city and a caring community. Thank you, man.
Mr. Suss?
No major report, just hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and happy holiday season.
No, no report, except the, Mr. Ward and I toured some private sewage operations in anticipation of Onwassa, considering the purchase of these facilities, which would provide additional sewer capacity for growth for the greater Onslow County area. So that decision will be coming up to Onwassa probably in the next month or so. So, but that's the extent of my report, except to wish everybody happy holidays.
Ms. Edwards?
No report, just a quick thank you to our new city, well, I guess can't say new anymore, to our city manager and the council at large for some really good conversations we've had in our, I'll say brainstorming sessions and planning sessions leading into budgets in the new year. They've been very productive, and I'm sure things will be rolling out for the public to see what's coming in 2023. Can you believe that's already around the corner? And then echo and add my happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everyone. Hope you have a safe and happy holiday with family and friends.
Just congratulations, Councilman Jackson, Brian, for five years. Thank you. I see you got a little, little pin, a little thing. When you get 10 years, they get, the mayor gives you the key to the city, and so you've got that to look forward to, so.
I appreciate it. We'll give you a key.
Unfortunately, it doesn't unlock anything.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Glad to, glad to have you and glad to work with you. So just wanted to say Merry Christmas to all the citizens of Jacksonville, especially to our staff that we, that we deal with. Y'all are the best. We're, the citizens of Jacksonville are very blessed to have each and every one of you. I don't know of a single weak link in the whole, whole system. And I'll echo a thought that I've, that I've said before. About the time I think I have an original idea, and I take it to the staff, I find out y'all have already discussed it. So my hat's off to you, and we are blessed, but Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to each and every one of you.
Thank you. And I also wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy and prosperous new, new, new year. And everybody, please be safe and enjoy family and all the good things that come with the great holidays that we're, we're about to, to approach. Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out by, my first comment before we get to our... Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out by, my first comment before we get to our One City Moment is to say thanks to council. Appreciate Mayor Pro Tim talking about the vision that this team has. This is an excellent team to not only deal with the day-to-day operations, but the vision, and it shows by the council's support and the trust when these individuals like Deanna, like Chief Tomlin, when they're presenting and you're listening and receiving that, it's a value add to us, because that's a lot of hard work and discussion that goes in each and every day. So we're very excited to make this happen and to be a part of this community team. So as we go to the One City Moment, Winterfest was this weekend. For anyone that was able to be there this weekend, I know that you're aware of the excitement and the energy that happens at this event. A lot of magic and beauty throughout the weekend, a couple of events over at the Commons and then down at the park. But seeing the kids, seeing the people out and about, we don't have a video of Mr. Mike Mumford, but he gets the driver of the year as he took people to the candy shop, and he was the hit of the show. But to our parks team, to our recreation team, thank you for making it happen. And someone who ever took these pictures, thanks for being out and about, because this was fantastic. Santa was there, and Santa is always a hit. I do hope that we're going to get to see Santa again, because some of us have been very good this year, and we would like presents. But for all others, this is the candy store. If you've never seen our candy store, I encourage you next year to get there and go through, this is kind of what Santa's elves look like, not what I pictured originally when I was a kid, but now I know that's what an elf looks like, and that's a fantastic elf. And this right here, Mayor, this is an unlit tree. So I encourage the council, as soon as we finish up, to head over to the park so that you can be part of the tree lighting ceremony tonight for our next One City Moment, which will happen in about 30-some minutes. So for anyone watching live, I encourage you to meet us down at the park around 6 o'clock. There's some entertainment going on right now. You may have seen Susan leave to make sure that the festivities are started, but the final official lighting will not happen until the mayor and the council get there to flip the switch. So if you never show up, no lights happen, but until then, thank you for this One City Moment.
Mr. Carter?
I need to report to council that Ryan King, Danny Bryan, and myself had a conference call this afternoon for over an hour with a local attorney out of Wilmington, who is now representing the Town Center folks. You can imagine, with two and a half years of history, he was kind of like drinking out of the fire hose, but he seemed very receptive to working with us and trying to get his clients to understand some of the requirements, et cetera. And we're going to be sending him some written documentation in the next week, and hopefully we're going to get a positive result moving in Town Center. But we did have that conversation. Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss economic development opportunities.
Is that moved?
Second. Have a motion and second. All in favor, signify with a 10%. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?